The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of September 24th, 2020 was convened virtually through the district software program. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag salute and a moment of silence for Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Toback, would you like to begin?
So we're fortunate to be in our third week of the first phase of returning to school with high school athletics back and preparing for competition in just a few days. We wanted to take a moment to thank the entire community for being responsible. On any given day, you can find an article about a school or a school district shutting down due to COVID-related problems, which are a result of parties or other off-campus large-scale activities. As I've said before, our ability to continue is fragile and largely dependent on what happens outside of school. So please continue to be cautious. Please avoid planning any parties or large-scale events that are not compliant with social distancing guidelines, because these kinds of events regularly lead to school shutdowns. You only need to look a few miles away, for example, in Pompton Lakes. That district shut down in all likelihood as exposure, as a result of exposure of students to an outside event, at least the high school bit, I'm sorry about that. Verona shut down their sports teams due to a large-scale party. Chatham shut down due to a Labor Day weekend gathering. In other cases, schools have been shut down after parents returning from out-of-state travel with their children in states where quarantining is required, returned to school, and filed false screening complaints. At this point, we're approaching the midpoint of the first phase or reopening of school plans, and will begin to work on the next phase of this plan soon, but we need your help to get there. Now is the time to remain vigilant and cautious. Well, there are many positives when it comes to reopening our schools. One negative is the problems we've had with technology, especially at the elementary level. Many users are experiencing dropped Google Meets, choppy sound, and choppy video. These problems are largely seen at the elementary level, and it has to do with the new Chromebooks that were purchased this summer as a secondary device for teachers to be used primarily for live streaming lessons. The problem is that these new Chromebooks have computer chips that are known to create problems with video conferencing software. Google is working to resolve the problem, but we also ordered new Dell laptops for our elementary teachers. These laptops will be in the hands of our teachers in about a month, and between now and then, we'll be using some existing technology like our iPads and, in some cases, our older Chromebooks. Also, we previously spoke about a video conferencing device known as the Swivel. 100 of these devices were ordered during the summer, and after being backordered, they shipped to the district, and they should be here any day. Like many school districts, back-to-school night is very different this year, and all of our back-to-school nights are virtual. I've had the chance to see some back-to-school night presentations, and I would like to congratulate our administrators and teachers for doing an excellent job in making the most of this opportunity to connect with our parents. Wayne Township Public Schools are proud to announce that when U.S. News and World Report released their 2020 Best High School rankings, both Wayne High Schools were included among the best high schools in New Jersey and the United States. Wayne Valley was ranked 104th among 409 high schools in New Jersey, and 2,362nd among the 17,792 high schools across the United States. Wayne Hills was also ranked highly by U.S. News and World Report, was 101st among 409 high schools in New Jersey, and 2,244th among 17,792 high schools nationally. Wayne Hills moved up slightly from the last ranking, while Wayne Valley dropped slightly. Because both high schools are ranked so closely, due to rounding, both Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley rank among the top 25% of New Jersey high schools and the top 13% of all high schools nationally. So an update regarding the extension of free breakfast and lunch for all Wayne students. The USDA has approved an extension of the Summer Seamless Food Program this week, making every child in Wayne Township eligible to receive free breakfast and lunch. The program was approved for all of our schools until further notice. As part of the Wayne Township Public Schools' return-to-school plan, lunch will continue to be available when pre-ordered for all cohorts, virtual students via the Wayne Schools' online lunch order site. Message has been sent to all parents and is posted on the website. This time, I'd like to turn the report over to Don Reichman to talk about equity, diversity, and inclusion.
Good evening, everyone. The district is excited to share that we will soon be working with educational consultant and staff developer Tamika Reese to assist with this very important work and help our committee members as we embark on our stand against racism, bias, and discrimination in all forms to ensure educational equity. Tamika brings 25 years of experience in education and is known for doing whatever it takes in order to enhance the improvement of student learning and achievement, as well as empowering and enabling teachers to improve equity outcomes for all students. She has presented multiple workshops on implicit bias, microaggressions, racism, and the impact of those factors on educational equity. Ms. Reese will focus on working with the committee to evaluate district operations for equity, diversity, and inclusion in the areas of human resources as it relates to hiring and practices, student scheduling, student achievement, English language curriculum, and history curriculum. The administrative team will be supported by Tamika to note areas of strength and identify areas for growth within their buildings and various district departments. By June, we will complete a formal assessment of our district's programs, policies, and practices through a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens, and publicly present the findings. The results from this assessment will help us frame out our next steps and plan for the continued implementation to further our commitment to this goal. Additionally, a keynote speaker, Al Hassan Suso, has been scheduled for the morning of November 3rd, District and Service Day. Al Hassan Suso was the 2019 New York State Teacher of the Year. He will be sharing with our staff his personal journey to demonstrate the power of perseverance and determination. His story details how he overcame incredible odds and came out on the other side as a true change-maker, impacting the lives of students and educators while maintaining his deep African roots. Our dedicated school counselors continue the work with our No Place for Hate program and have expanded this to address the topic of cultural competency. We continue to develop programs to expand our ability to understand and effectively interact with our students across cultures. By educating our students about different cultural practices represented in our rich Wayne community, we will continue to increase awareness and develop positive attitudes towards cultural differences. This concludes my report.
Yes, thank you. Wayne Township Public Schools was notified yesterday of a coronavirus relief fund grant in the amount of $273,467. The formula state of New Jersey used to allocate the subject fund was to take resident student enrollment and multiply that by a factor $25 per student plus a allocation meant to address low-income student needs. The source of this grant program is part of the $100 million allocation from the federal government to assist public schools with the frame costs associated with the opening of the 2020, 2021 school year, and that $100 million allocation was originally part of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, which was known as CARES, and that act was passed by the federal government at the beginning of the pandemic. Eligible uses of the grant funds are as follows: air filters, computers and technology specifically we could use for Chromebooks and other computer devices for educational purposes, personal protective equipment known as PPE, which will consist of masks, gowns, face shields, and soap, and cleaning and sanitizing supplies. We await further guidance from the department. As I said, we've received notification yesterday, and we await for the further guidance as far as how to apply or what type of regulations that would cause the accounting of this information, and that'll be part of our budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and we identified in Fund 20 as part of our funds and our total funds for our budget. And that also covers the time period from March to December 2020, so any type of purchase or costs incurred during that time period is eligible for that fund, the funds from this grant. That concludes the update with the relief fund grant.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. And to wrap things up for our reporting tonight, during this reporting period, there were no incidents reported as HIV.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Mr. Moffett, do you have revisions to the agenda at this time?
Yes, I do. The areas, the emergent human resource area tonight are where our revisions are, so I'll start there. Items 1 through 11 under emergent human resources, T dot 3 is approval of appointment of district staff for 2021 school year. Revise number 1, Judith Carbonelli, add 4.5 hours slash day, no benefits. Revise effective date from September 8th, 2020 to September 25, 2020. T 5, approval of unnamed clubs. Revise number 9 on attachment for, or said from Eric Deering to Patricia Knoll. The next revision is T 6, which is approval of appointment of secondary extracurricular advisors. Delete on Wayne Hills list, number 8, Daphna Gary, and number 9, Jen Piero, as FB La co-advisors. Add Joseph Torso, Student Council Advisor, step 4, $6,047. Add Fernanda Saberindo as Student Council Advisor, step 4, $6,047. Item number T 7, approval of additional compensation. Number 1, six-period assignments, revise number 10. Name should be Jenna Ferrer, not Jennifer Ferrer, on attached list. T 9, approval of leave requests. Delete item number 1, which is employee ID 6108 in its entirety. And lastly, T 11, approval of appointment of district leave requests, I'm sorry, approval of appointment of district substitutes. Add number 2, Tina Parr, which is sub-nurse, daily rate of $200 a day. That concludes the list of revisions for tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This time. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comments on agenda items only. Residents are to state their name, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover?
Move.
Mr. Bubba, Mr. Giordano. Okay. I don't see any hands raised.
Seeing no hands raised, I move to close.
Okay. Mrs. Share, Mr. Duffy. Okay, sorry, you'll have to wait to the second portion. Moving on with the agenda. Item J, approval of minutes. Can I get a mover?
I'll move it.
Mr. Bubba?
Second.
Mr. Giordano? Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yeah.
Mrs. Shear? And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have committee reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll start.
Mr. Bubba?
To bring up the document. Okay, facilities and transportation met tonight with myself, Mrs. Putup, Mr. Meso, Mr. Moffett, and Mr. Scavetti. First item on our list is the ESIP 2 is close, one issue left in the contract that is being ironed out. We're going to start with new bulbs, because it's a quick way to get things going with savings seen right away. We're also looking for a construction project meeting to happen in November, so we can start planning out the rest of it. The PTO at James Fallon has donated $16,900 for a new playground. John is taking the lead in getting things ready, and it will be started soon. Done in three phases. AP Turhun, the PTO donated a kiln for $3,400, and we're saving the PTO about $2,500, because the facilities department is doing the installation in-house, so we're not paying anyone to come in and do it. Facilities Department is reviewing their district responsibilities for their employees and job descriptions, and they're looking at to see where they can make some efficiency changes. Cleaning and disinfecting is happening every day, including Saturday. Disinfecting is done daily, starting at 3:30. So that's good for everybody. The Ori Childhood Center is just about complete, finishing up the final details. The carpet with the logos will be there Monday, and we also received a town, a permit from the town to put up a vinyl fence that we will be moving forward with. And then we discussed future projects for the facilities department. So we looked at Phase 3 for the Next Generation Science Center at Wayne Valley, Phase 4 for Wayne Hills with the Next Generation Science Labs, two of those. Several buildings need fire alarm upgrades, so we're going to be looking at that in the next couple of years. Seven of our elementary still need generators, and that's a huge undertaking that we're going to have to do, because every time we lose power, it costs us money. We have to put somebody on power watch, they have to stay in the building, so down the road, we are going to have to look at that. We're also going to look at, need to look down the road at replacing six boilers. We are replacing some with the ESIP at Wayne Valley, but there's still six others. Three routes that will need to be planned out over the next few years, just to make sure that they stay in good shape. And electrical upgrades, as we do the generators and the boilers, we'll be doing electrical upgrades to make sure that everything runs efficiently. And that was the facilities part of this meeting. And, oh, we also have one other thing, the November 3 presidential polling locations. We actually asked the county last year to try to get us out of having them at the schools, and this year, they added four more. So now we're going to be open in six schools. We're not going to be in session, so it's not a big deal from that perspective, but we asked and they added, so I don't understand. Then we talked about transportation, the opening weeks. The Transportation Department is very pleased with how things are going. Right now, they're running 25 54-seat bus with 127 routes. There's 40 route vans covering 170 routes. Seven of those are out of district, six others are in and out. The ECC challenges have happened with busing. Right now, they started with 15 routes, they now have 16, and they're heading towards 17. Ridership, about 1,000 kids a day on the average are on the buses. Social distance thing is going well. There's a max of 17 kids on a 54-person bus. Disinfecting happens between every route. Right now, we have 3,480 registered riders with 2,464 bus stops. Every bus has had riders, sometimes ridership can be low depending on the cohort schedule, and parents taking their kids and dropping them off, and some buses leave in the morning, and basically, they run routes all day long, because they're going from the, starting out at the high schools and going all the way through the rest of the day. Our inspection schedule with the buses is going to happen late October, and we will be prepared as always. And then we have our yearly transportation report that has to go to the state by October 30th that is being worked on, and will be done by that date. And there's four vans that are aging out at the end of the school year. Right now, we are going to be buying two now, and then we're going to look at two in the next, when the next budget cycle comes around. And that concludes my report.
As always, very busy in the facilities department. Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Mrs. Share, personnel.
This evening, personnel met. It was myself, Mr. Pavlock, Ms. Kumar, Ms. Kazan, Ms. Reichman, Ms. Clark, Ms. Sir, and Mr. Dr. Toback. So we discussed personnel issues, unemployment, and technology and scheduling for power professionals. Thank you.
As always, two Mondays, confidential matters in personnel. Mr. Giordano, communications, thank you.
Thank you. Communications Subcommittee met this evening. It was composed of Dr. Toback, myself, Mr. Duffy, and Mrs. Albanese. A short but sweet one in this case. We discussed issues based upon community input on various topics, and we discussed many issues that have been brought up in the press. Those that were considered major issues have been addressed earlier this evening and in previous meetings by Dr. Toback, and that is our report.
Thank you. Anybody else need to report? Okay. Very well. Moving on. Human resource items.
Madam President, if I could, make a motion to move all, as a consent agenda, M through V.
I'll second. Second, Mrs. Share. Roll call, Mr. Moffett. Before the roll call, we do need to read a retirement and a resolution. So should I do that before the roll call?
You can.
Do you think? Okay. So, Mrs. Albanese, if you don't mind doing the retirement?
Tonight, we're going to read a retirement for Margie Kimmel. Margie is the true heart of Pines Lake School. By her desk, she has a sign that reads, "Secretaries are the core of the school." After 28 years of service, this could not be more true. Mrs. Kimmel has served multiple generations of the Pines Lake community and has ensured the smooth and effective functioning of the school. The Pines Lake staff knows her as the problem solver and the resolutionist, trusting in her experience and knowledge to resolve these issues. Beyond just a secretary, Mrs. Kimmel is also a trusted friend, a helpful grandmother, and a caring parent to many in the Pines Lake community. To the Pines Lake families, Mrs. Kimmel is a welcoming presence. She greets all families with kindness and represents Pines Lake School as the welcoming and inclusive environment that it is. We are so very grateful for her many contributions and wish her the best of luck in her retirement. The Pines Lake staff and community will miss her laughter and smile. She has loved serving the Pines Lake community, and only a pandemic could make her retire. Mrs. Kimmel, congratulations, the best of luck, enjoy your retirement. And for me personally, and for my three children, thank you for all of the welcoming that you have done for every child who walks through those doors. Thank you.
And in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, we have a resolution that will be read by Mrs. Kumar.
Resolution recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas from September 15th through October 15th, 2020, the United States celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas the Borough of the Census estimates Hispanic population living in the 50 states at more than 59 million people, plus an additional 3.3 million living in the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, making Hispanic Americans 18% of the total population of the United States and the largest racial or ethnic minority group in the United States. Whereas in 2017, there were close to 1 million or more Latino residents in the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico and each of the states of Arizona, California, Colorado, Florida, Georgia, Illinois, Massachusetts, Nevada, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, Texas, and Washington. Whereas between July 1st, 2008, and July 1st, 2018, Latinos grew the population of the United States by approximately 1,200,000 individuals, accounting for more than one-half of the total population growth during that period. Whereas the Latino population in the United States is projected to grow to 107 million people by 2065, which point the Latino population will comprise more than 24% of the total population in the United States. Whereas the Latino population in the United States is currently the third-largest population of Latinos worldwide, exceeding the size of the population in every Latin American and Caribbean country except Mexico and Brazil. Whereas in 2018, there were more than 18,701,184 Latino children under 18 years of age in the United States, which represents approximately 1/3 of the total Latino population in the United States. Whereas from 1996 to 2016, the number of Hispanic students enrolled in schools, colleges, and universities in the United States doubled from 8,800,000 to 17,900,000, and Hispanics now make up 22.7% of all people enrolled in this school in the United States. Whereas more than 1 in 4 public school students in the United States are Latino, and the share of Latino students is expected to rise nearly 30% by 2027. Whereas 19% of all college students are Latino, making Latinos the second-largest racial or ethnic minority group enrolled in higher education in the United States, including two-year community colleges and four-year colleges and universities. Whereas a record 12,700,000 Latinos voted in the 2016 presidential election, representing a record 9.2% of the electorate in the United States. Whereas the number of eligible Latino voters is expected to rise to 40 million by 2030, accounting for 40% of the growth in the eligible electorate in the United States by 2032. Whereas each year, approximately 800,000 Latino citizens reach 18 years of age and become eligible to vote, a number that could grow to 1 million per year, additionally adding 18 million new Latino voters by 2032. Whereas in 2018, the annual purchasing power of Hispanic Americans is estimated $1.7 trillion, which is an amount greater than the economy of all except 17 countries in the world. Whereas there are more than 4,370,000 Hispanic-owned firms in the United States, supporting millions of employees nationwide and contributing more than $1,700 billion in revenue to the economy of the United States. Whereas Hispanic-owned businesses represent the fastest-growing segment of small businesses in the United States, with Latino-owned businesses growing at more than 15 times the national rate. Whereas as of August 2018, more than 28 million Latino workers represented 17% of the total civilian labor force of the United States, and as a result of Latinos experiencing the fastest population growth of all race and ethnicity groups in the United States, the rate of the Latino participation in the labor force is expected to grow 20% by 2024, accounting for 1/5 of the total labor force. Whereas with 66.1% of Latinos participating in the labor force, Latinos have the highest rate of participation in the labor force of any racial or ethnic group, resulting in an expansion of the Latino labor force at a rate that is three times as fast as the rest of the population. Whereas as of 2017, there are approximately 326,800 Latino elementary and middle school teachers, 77,033 Latino chief executives of business, 54,576 Latino lawyers, 73,372 Latino physicians and surgeons, and 15,895 Latino psychologists who contribute to the United States through their professions. Whereas Hispanic Americans serve in all branches of the armed forces and have fought bravely in every war in the history of the United States. Whereas as of 2019, there are more than 200,000 Hispanic members of the armed forces serving on active duty, and approximately 1.2 million Hispanic veterans in the armed forces, including 136,000 Latinas. Whereas as of 2018, more than 399,000 Hispanics served in the post-September 11th, 2001 overseas contingency operations, and Hispanic- And Hispanics represent 12.1% of the total number of veterans who have served in operations in Iraq and Afghanistan since September 11th, 2001. Whereas as of August 2019, at least 688 fatalities in Iraq and Afghanistan were members of the armed forces who were Hispanic. Whereas an estimated 200,000 Hispanics were mobilized for World War I and approximately 500,000 Hispanics served in World War II. Whereas more than 80,000 Hispanics served in the Vietnam War, representing 5.5% of individuals who made the ultimate sacrifice in the United States in the conflict, even though Hispanics comprised only 4.5% of the population of the United States during the Vietnam War. Whereas approximately 148,000 Hispanic soldiers served in the Korean War, including the 65th Infantry Regiment of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, known as the Bariguaniers, the only active-duty segregated Latino military unit in the history of the United States. Whereas 60 Hispanic Americans have received the Congressional Medal of Honor, the highest award for valor and action against an enemy force bestowed on an individual serving in the armed forces. Whereas Hispanic Americans are dedicated public servants, holding posts at the highest levels of government in the United States, including one seat on the Supreme Court of the United States, four seats in the Senate, and 36 seats in the House of Representatives. And whereas Hispanic Americans harbor a deep commitment to family and community, an enduring work ethic, and a perseverance to succeed and contribute to society. Now, therefore, being resolved that the Wayne Board of Education, one, recognizes the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2020 through October 15th, 2020; two, assumes the integral role of Latinos and the manifold heritage of Latinos in the economy, culture, and identity of the United States; and, three, urges the residents of Wayne to observe Hispanic Heritage Month with appropriate programs and activities that celebrate the contributions of Latinos to the United States.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. While that may have seemed long, it certainly was eye-opening. And we're thankful for the contributions of our Latino Americans. Thank you for taking the time to read that. And I'm assuming there'll be lots of things going on throughout this month in the schools to continue to honor those contributions and to teach our students what they're about. At this time, we'll go to the second public portion. Oh, I'm sorry. You have to do a roll call, Mr. Moffett. It's been so long since we made the motion.
Right, Mr. Duffy made a motion for item M through V, which was seconded by Mrs. Scher, and I'll call roll. Mr. Bubba?
Yes, to, and I'll abstain on my name on the emergent, I think it's T, the items, or the V items? Oh, the S item, sorry. My name and the number seven on the S, I am just everything else.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, I'll let's, yes, yes.
Mr. Giordano?
I'll abstain on S7 and yes on everything else.
Mrs. Kumar?
Abstain from S7 with my name and yes on everything else.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes, on everything except item S7, my name.
Mrs. Scher?
Yes, to everything except I'll abstain on S7 for my name.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes, and I'll abstain on S7 for my name.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes, I could stay on the S7.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, back to the public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can we get a mover?
Move.
I think that was Mr. Duffy and Mrs. Scher. We're ready.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Dennis Carroll, and I'm making a statement on behalf of the Wayne Education Association Representative Council. Few things are more difficult to deal with than the issue of race. Our history includes the sanctioned kidnapping enslavement of Africans brought to America for the express purpose of forced unpaid labor. After slavery, Black citizens endured the everyday violations of their rights. Tactics including lynching, burning of their homes and churches, and other forms of domestic terrorism began. Their citizenship, their voting rights, their simple right to go about their life without harassment was dishonored from that day to the present. We see nightly evidence of how far we have to go in providing all Americans with the same rights as others, not only in words, but in deeds. Our Black citizens have always been the victim of this crippling racism. The biggest difference is now it's being videotaped. We have to believe our eyes. We have a race problem, and it permeates every community in ways that we see and in ways that we don't. Wayne is certainly no different. Over the past several board meetings, many of our students and former students shared their firsthand accounts of the many racial divides that our district still needs to overcome. We are asking that we all do a better job of listening and responding to their concerns. At last month's meeting, there were those in the board disregarding the speakers and instead focused on their devices or other matters. The kids spoke of their experience of being marginalized. Please understand that your lack of attention towards our students and their experience was, in fact, an act of marginalization. While board members displayed various levels of attention, last month's meeting gave a name and a face to that indifference. And we're speaking to you, Mr. Bubba, and we're speaking of you. They shared their heartbreaking stories of racial prejudice and their day-to-day burden of studying while being non-white in Wayne. While this was going on, it was clear you weren't listening. While some spoke, you were visibly laughing. It's unacceptable. Please understand that when people see board members acting in such an apathetic fashion, it naturally gives rise to questions about how seriously they are taking this issue. And I'm certainly not speaking to all members. Moving the district forward is difficult when there is indifference and unwillingness to change. But our students feel this pain. Our society and our schools must start to seriously and thoughtfully deal with the causes, as well as the effects of prejudice, to all the groups that suffer. We command the district in moving forward and developing a program to deal with this problem. What we heard tonight was absolutely fantastic. Mr. Bubba, we would invite you to join this effort so that you can better understand the problem and so that you can participate in the conversations and the solutions. Our kids are smart. They can see through in sincere efforts. They want to know that the district cares and that they will do something about it, something meaningful, something real. To these students and former students that have spoken, know that we hear you. We understand your pain, and we know that we have to do more. We know that we have to do better and that we, the educators, also need to grow, to learn, and to better understand your concerns and your fears. We're committed to working to fix these problems. To that end, the WA has formed a social justice team in conjunction with social justice advocates from around the state. Our only goal is honest conversation in real action. We are looking forward to working in concert with the district in this effort. If not, we can work without them. But no, we'll be working. And your teachers are here to listen, to learn, and to help make our schools welcoming to all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Next.
Ms. Kazan, the next two speakers have an older version of Zoom, which won't allow them to participate.
I'm sorry, I think I was on mute. Cheryl Nyberlin and Edward Nazarko. You will need to phone in if you want to make a public comment. Your Zoom is not compatible. Hopefully, you can do that. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anyone else that wanted to make a comment? I don't see anyone else at this time. So if those two callers have a question, feel free to email the board or the superintendent because unfortunately, we cannot hear you.
Madam President, seeing nobody else, move to close.
Mr. Duffy, Mr. Bubba? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Old Business. Anyone? New business? Mrs. Scher?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a few questions myself. My first question is, I know that Dr. Toback had mentioned the computers for the elementary school teachers. I was just wondering what the turnaround time was going to be for that. And I'd also like to get, if we can get a very clear explanation on how the Wellness Wednesdays work across the board. From my understanding, I was told that elementary had to present new material where, as middle school and high school were not presenting new material. And to me, that seems like a conflict, why some would have to and some wouldn't. So maybe I'm not understanding it correctly. So I think that the parents and myself, I don't know if any other board members and staff, if you could just go through and explain exactly what a Wednesday should look like for the teachers and the students, that would really help me. And on that note, I just wanted to say thank you to the teachers that have reached out to board members. I'm assuming that you're all following the proper chain of command and going through your principals and your supervisors first. But as a board member, I do appreciate if you want to be heard. We appreciate hearing from you. I appreciate hearing from you. So thank you for all the teachers that reached out. And I tried to get back to most of them. I'm sorry, it got a little overwhelming, so I was not able to reach out to everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So there's two questions. The first one is about the computer turnaround for the elementary teachers. So we did order, at the very beginning of the week, probably Monday, we ordered approximately 300 new Dell Inspiron computers at a cost of about $286,000. So there's a process involved in distributing the computers because ultimately, district software has to go on those computers. There's an image that has to be produced on each, and all the software licensing and all the other details that go along with distributing a large number of computers all have to be taken care of. Adding that all together, adding delivery time, the estimate from the beginning of the week was about four to five weeks. It may be sooner than that. And the reason why we might be able to do some things a little bit sooner is because we would like to do the distribution in phases. So as soon as we have a certain grade level number ready to go, we'd like to distribute at those grade levels. And we know that one of the grade levels, the lower grade levels, K1, 2 especially, are the grade levels that are really having problems when they have dropped Google Meets and they're experiencing difficulties with technology. Ultimately, it's very hard to get the students back. So that's the grade level that we would like to focus on first, those three grade levels, and then distribute to grades 3, 4, and 5. So that's, so hopefully, like I said, within about a month, all the teachers should have the new computers in hand. So that's that question. So Wellness Wednesdays are things that have been, you know, a lot of people have asked about Wellness Wednesday, from parents to, you know, there's a variety of questions about it. There's a very thorough explanation that exists in our Back to School Plan, and there's also a very thorough explanation that exists in our Parent Guide. So in sum, the Wellness Wednesdays provide opportunities for students and teachers to, one, pursue wellness goals. So there are obviously some wellness activities that can be associated. We've only had a few so far. It is true that at the elementary level, they became more instructional than, as opposed to the high schools and the middle schools. So there's no question about that. However, a change was made this week to allow for additional activities. So there's some programs in art. There's programs in physical education, relaxation techniques, things like that. So we have made a change at the elementary level based on some of the concerns that have been expressed about the academic nature of the Wellness Wednesdays. While certainly there is an important part of academics that still can be incorporated as far as additional tutoring, as far as providing help to students that are in need of help, students who have questions. It's also an important aspect of meeting the needs of our special needs students. So in the end, those students also receive services on those days. So there's no clear-cut way of saying definitively, every teacher will do this, every teacher will do that. That is not part of what Wellness Wednesday is about. But there are common programs and some other things that we will be doing along those themes, along with, like I said, opportunities to reach out and also opportunities for teachers to plan and prepare themselves for the next coming, the coming days. So that's the general idea behind the Wellness Wednesdays. And Mrs. Reichman, I don't know if you had any other comments you'd like to make about Wellness Wednesdays? Are you good?
I think, I think you covered it. Beginning next week, there'll be a number of additional wellness activities that will be offered by the specialists, along with counselors, and anything from art, music, media activities that could be presented, as well as providing additional time, which I think you already said, for remediation, small group instruction, and an opportunity to just review the lessons and material that was taught throughout the week. I think that's really it. I think you covered it.
Old Business?
Hi.
Mrs. Kumar?
So along the lines of the Wednesdays, I think there may have been something mentioned about this in Facilities. But there are teachers that need to use the Wi-Fi on Wednesdays and have been requesting to come into school. They said they've been addressed. I just wanted to know what the status of that was.
Okay, so I sent out an email to our staff members based on some feedback that ultimately, teachers were interested in coming to school on Wednesdays to take advantage of the resources they have, to take advantage of the technology. So we offered that earlier this week to teachers if they wanted to come in on Wednesday. What we did do in the prior week was we adjusted our cleaning. So that way, the intense cleaning that happens on a Wednesday happens on a second shift. So the same amount of cleaning goes on, but goes on during the second shift instead of the first shift. That allows teachers to come in. The only thing that we ask the teachers to do is if you do come in on Wednesday, you have to be out by 3:30 so that ultimately, the district's cleaning process also can be, can be followed.
Very good. Anyone else? New business? More comments? Mrs. Putup?
I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for calling in this evening. What he had to say is extremely important. And the district has also been working on plans as outlined by Mrs. Reichman to help inculcate better understanding of systemic racism in our district and making steps to prevent it. Thank you. I also wanted to thank the teachers who reached out. I feel for you, having been an elementary teacher myself. Unfortunately, solutions will not happen overnight. I know that the administration is working on that. So please hang in there. And... I know that the administration is working on that, so please hang in there and feel free to email at any time. Thank you. Have a good.
Hey, anyone else? All right. I'll wrap up. I echo my colleagues' sentiments about our teachers. We received your emails. They were passed along to administration. We are listening. And as I said at the last meeting, like any plan, there's a time to plan and there's a time to implement, and now we're seeing the bugs, the kinks, the glitches, and we'll address them as quickly as we can, but know that we're here to support you and we appreciate the feedback. Thank you, Mr. Carroll, also. That sounds like a very interesting initiative that I'm sure we'll have discussions with, with administration, just to see how we can possibly incorporate that and share what we're doing as well. I want to thank the PTOs, who always are so generous. The Playground Initiative for Fallon is amazing, and the APT-Kiln, that's a nice contribution. And thank you to all the PTOs. I'm sure there'll be more to come, because as always, you're very generous, and we appreciate that. So if there's nothing else, I'll take a move to close. Mr. Bubba? Giordano? Thank you all, and have a good evening.